Monday of September twenty second. This is a work session for the city of Trinidad. Following the work session, we will have an executive session, special meeting. Item number one on the work session is building improvement plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. So, the building improvement plan. Are the Development Services team, so that's the team I oversee, as well with the city manager, and then all the directors behind me that actually operate these buildings. What this is, is you can look through it as a, it's just a list of all the city own buildings that we operate out of, and some of their maintenance issues. Their improvements that we kind of want to start working on. So, you can see, we can all work. Probably easy to just walk through the, through the thing itself, through the building list itself, so. And this is just a way for us to track our buildings, see what we've done, what still has to be done. And this is all leading up to me asking for some more money and CIP to actually get some of these projects crossed off this list. We, like I said, we could go through the directors I think are behind me for the most part, and we could answer if there's any special ones that you have. But like starting with City Hall. And these, these projects range from very big to very small, and a lot of them were. The nice thing about having a list like this is we can combine them if need be. So, for example, we're paving, we're not gonna put out a bid to pave just the community center's parking lot. We're gonna try to pave as many parking lots as we can that actually really need it, so. And, yeah, so we can, and this, this book is also something we lack. I mean Tara Booth went through, put this book together, she does a good job of keeping track of stuff like this, and now we have a nice document that's gonna be, you know, revised every six months to a year saying, okay, we've got this done. This, and then, you know, issues come up, these buildings are old, some of these buildings are old, some of them, there are issues that come up, so then we can add projects as we go forward. But it's just a good way for our city to keep this, to control and see where we're at, where we're at on our buildings, because they're one of the biggest assets we have, we hold. And then, I think a lot of this came kind of because my department started to take over some of these buildings, kind of making more of our own. I think you guys have seen that, you know, I came up here asking for the roof of the community center, the roof for the power plant in the past, so. I think that's just a way for everything to be centralized, people overseeing it, and then getting some of the maintenance and projects in the other buildings done. And they're kind of in order of what we ranked them, as far as these projects, the, they're alphabetized by building, but the project list is kind of the immediate stuff down to the stuff that may be not as immediate, so. Like we have City Hall here, we have sandstone, some issues, there's sandstone and facade that's down by the utility building, some security improvements, because that's obviously always, always a big concern for everybody. And then, we kind of grouped together, remodel on all these buildings, if, if we're gonna say, oh, we need to redo our bathrooms, or add an office or something like that, so. You can see that there, historic windows, which obviously there's a lot of windows on this building. So, they go, going through and, well, look for some grant money on that, but at least it's on the list, we could keep it, and keep in mind that that's always gonna work, one of our goals. Improving HVAC and then a generator. And just because they're in this order doesn't mean that's exactly the way we'll go, like I said, if there's a project we could piggyback along, maybe some low hanging fruit, we'll definitely take it, take a jump after it.
What does it mean council bathroom to storage?
I think, and unfortunately Audrey was on it at City Hall.
That one is they wanted to replace, she was wanting to remodel that into a storage from a bathroom. Because it's not being used, so, and we have the bathroom right down there, she wanted to do the.
Please, please jump in, Nancy, I know, everybody's upset about the extra, I'm sorry.
Nick is thinking, I didn't turn that one.
I was worried about the.
It's a prioritized thing too as well, she thought, these were lists given to us that were highly suggested by the directors of each of the buildings. And so, we're, we'll go prior, we've been prioritizing them as necessaries.
If you continue electing all people at the City Hall, that will be.
She's especially big of us guys.
I kind of don't agree with that, because if we have a back, if people on council, it's not gonna affect those of us that are leaving. But it's better for number one to segregate councils from public, to go to the restroom, and it's quicker.
Fair enough, thank you for the input.
Yeah.
We'll make sure we let Audrey know.
So next, the annex, like you can see on the top of these things, we give the address of where, who's operating out of these buildings. Your bill and the square footage, you see the idea of the building, he's, you know, we're all familiar with all our city buildings, but sometimes you might not be, so. This one, replace the gutters, there's some points that need to be done on the backside of the building for sure. Frog eye repair in the historic windows, so that's. Oh, man.
Bob's here.
Jer, Jeremy, what's up?
So, it's, it's on the exit signs, the two, the two lights on each side, it's like, it kind of looks like frog eyes.
I asked the same question.
That's what I thought, Jeremy's, Jeremy's on top of this. Like I said, it's not me, or if you guys have any questions, please, please jump in. The library, some roof, the rooftop drains repaired, and repair roof on back entrance, and stuck with the rear of the building. Repair sandstone steps by front windows and front steps, redoing the carpeting, and a little bit of an interior remodel right with the bathroom. Yeah, just kind of general remodel there, updating the building a bit on the inside, historic windows and HVAC. So I will say for the City Hall, the library, the annex, and I think fire house number two, since they're historic buildings, we will be looking at doing some assessments, historical structural assessment on it, and then seeing if, what if we get a list of there's anything extra to be added to it, and then as well as that allows us to go after some of these grant funds, so. That's, that's actually in the works right now for the, for the library, so. We put, we put out an RFP for historical structural assessment to help with that. Public Works Building, that's out there off of County Road thirty seven, three point six, old Guzzo building. Purchases out there where the houses fleets and parks and street bridge. So there's a bit of a remodel, so that's a remove the, or move around their lift. There's some lights that need to be put in, give a little bit of a visual. Exhaust fans for carbon monoxide detectors, exterior mandor on the south east of the, or yeah, south east of the building. Add some sheening to the fence to kind of separate that from the surrounding houses around there, because it is, it is a bit of a weird, weird dynamic with the, with that there. And then, some purchases of a, you know, power washer, wheel tire balancer, and a charger, an ice machine to keep the guys comfortable up there. Maintenance of one of the west garage doors, and then, this, there's like a separate, almost like a separate thing where you have like, I want a new building type of big, and that falls in place. So, example that is constructing the Public Works Building, not that we're gonna do that with this five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, I ain't gonna touch that, you know, we all know that. But at least it's on our radar for everyone, we can kind of plan around it in the future for, and that's for, you know, Bob as well as, you know, everyone else. At least they know, hey, at some point, they love to build a new Public Works Building, kind of separate fleet from, from the Public Works, preferably probably getting Public Works back into the town, so they're not, you know, when there's a snowstorm, they don't, everyone has to drive out towards, you know, movie theater-ish, get the equipment, warm it up, and then come back in, be a lot, it's centralized would be a lot, probably a lot smoother for everyone. But that's, that's that list there, and so that thing is kind of, we kind of, I think we call like big builds, where you're like, this is gonna be extremely expensive, we want the budget, budget seriously around this, so. But it's still just nice to keep it on the list.
Question, sorry, I apologize. Did we address the drainage issue out there?
That's a separate project.
That's it, okay.
Yeah.
This is just for the building improvements.
Oh, okay, because it floods quite a bit over there.
It is.
Yeah, I will say that there's some projects that are on, that we've already done or ongoing that didn't make the list, because we were, we don't need to put them on the list, we know they're not completed, yeah.
We've already budgeted for them.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a landfill, they need to replace some windows out there in their, in their building, and then a new equipment barn building. Now, this one I think is just more of maybe some power providing, but just something to keep the equipment out of the, out of the weather. So, nothing, nothing too crazy on the, on the build there, not that, like I said, we haven't put a ton of thought in these, it's just, anything that the, that these directors said, this would be nice to have, we just had to put on the list, that way, if it never happens, yeah, it never happens, or maybe it happens in twenty years or whatever, maybe, but at least it's on the list to get, try to give us something to shoot for in the future. The senior center, there's a couple things there, and I will note, just one other thing, we, we did the, the city's done the roofs for a lot of these buildings, we did some of the bigger roofs, we've done a lot of smaller roofs. So we're kind of fortunate, we don't have any roofs on here right now, so as long as the weather keeps cooperating with us, we'll, we'll be okay on that, but. Yeah, that's just an overall thing that I thought, when we were talking about putting this together, I was like, man, we're gonna do a ton of roofs, I know it, just because that's always something that fails on, you know, fails on every building, but. There was only a handful, and I was like, whoa, and I was like, well, we just redid them all, so they should all be pretty good, so. That's good, that's a, that's a very good positive for, for all this. This one is a remodel of the John Re, the John Re Reno Room Edition. I guess it has some stabilization issues, replacing windows, replace the kitchen, a new, uh, replace kitchen, oh, office flooring, and then, and the boiler room. I think that's flooring as well, so, just a kind of general smaller remodel there, and then the parking area needs some AD improvements on the upper and lower, so. Yeah, we kind of, this is the buildings and the exterior to, to an extent, not, nothing too crazy.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Is, are the ADA improvements that are necessary, are they part of our obligation under the settlement or just something?
I don't believe so.
They are not.
Yeah, they are not, thank you both.
They are not.
Okay.
I didn't think so. So spaced increase, which is on a building you can, maintenance, it's actually not, not, it's pretty good shape. The, there's an HVAC issue, I don't know if you've ever heard of it, but there is a HVAC issue right now. That is an ongoing project, so we, we will, we'll get that, we'll get that solved before, that's why it's on this list. But this one, remodulate the basement, me and Jeremy actually were trying, trying to get this one out, just because we, you know, remediation's probably a high safety priority type thing, so. Me and Jeremy started working on that project, and we, we kind of put this together, and we're like, oh, that's probably one, one target for maybe this year. If we, you know, I think looking at it, we should have enough money to maybe handle that. And then there's safety concerns in there, or safety upgrades, install panic buttons, dedicated phone line, and some cameras. So we'll work with IT, city's IT on that, they, they handle all that stuff for everyone. So that'll be, that'd be ongoing as well, that's kind of a common theme. Then adding some power outlets, which I think Veronica said they, they were going to do anyway without this, so. But if, if it is, then we'll take it off the list and just keep moving on, and then add a water heater in the tenant areas, that'd be like the, behind the tea company and the glass shop there where Carl, where Carl's operating currently, so, I think we can have either home water heater.
Hey Nick, you know, some of the older buildings that have the single pane windows, do you upgrade those to energy efficient double pane?
Well, that's a good question, I'd say yes, because our next conversation's gonna make us say yes.
Certain historic buildings will have some caveats to the windows.
Yeah, well, the historic ones we'll have to evaluate that, but some of the newer ones will probably, will be energy efficient, but.
It takes money in the end.
Yeah, yeah, so, we'll see, and there's, there's some grant funds allowed for that energy efficiency, bringing those buildings up, so. Yeah, that's all on the table for, for all this. Anything else? Keep moving along, if I'm talking to you. You guys tell me, see Nick, I can read. The police station, there's, there's some outdoor stuff, like adding still poles, kind of some balusters to keep people from driving in, kind of down their stairway just a bit. I think there was just a little bit of concrete work there, replace some stairs for the front doors, a little more concrete work. And then there's a, you can see that big remodel, and it's kind of, it's kind of making the police station, you know, I don't really want to go through that one, there's a lot there. They're moving around, moving around walls a bit, making stuff soundproof, and I think one of them was hardening the. Yeah, that's a heck of a remodel, but it's just hardening, making sure that that office function, function, or functions more than it does now. I mean, it was a school, so it wasn't really built for a police department, and that's kind of a, I think, uh, the police chiefs and police chiefs before have done a good job of making it work, but at some point it'd be nice to have an actual police department where that was, and a, of school at one point, so. Yeah, there's, that's kind of an extensive remodel there. There's also some HVAC stuff with their air exchange, update cooling system for the dispatch. And then add two to three, uh, two, add two to three bay garage on the west side of the parking lot, another way they, they have the same issue keeping their, their stuff out, so. And then as well as there's just their general storage and stuff, so. This is like the first meeting we had when we started this process like three months ago, so. This one's really far in the back of my mind right now, but, yeah, it's a, like I said, it's just getting the, the building up to a functioning standard that'll help, you know, then as well, then, in the long run. Fire station number one, this is also like the second meeting we had, we had Mike and, or the police chief and fire chief, it's back to back, so I remember that, but I don't quite remember the whole discussion. Repair and place roof coating, fire station number one is up there off Santa Fe Trail. So, it's, yeah, it's built nineteen seventy-three, it's not, it's the newer of the two. Install protective coating on bay floor, then some concrete work around the building, as well as on the backside of the building where they do a lot of their training, so, trying to make sure that he has like a burnt building, that's where they do a lot of training, making it more sound than he is now. Adding some retaining walls, let's see, and then an interior remodel. I don't know, exterior, exterior remodel, exterior door living area with smoke seal, brick wall between doors, loose and vague. The host tower, which is that, you know, it kind of sits up in that building, needs some, needs some repair. Let's see, a backup generator, which seems like a really good, good place to have, backup generator to the fire station, and as an asphalt park, asphalt parking lot, and I think that kind of, kind of becomes a common thing is some paving, so. That's fire station number one. Number two is another one that we'll do a historical structural, or historic structural assessment on, or historical assessment on. Some tuck pointing can be done. A remodel of the interior, to replace some doors, place some flooring, patching holes, and just making, making it function better for, for all, for all the guys there. And then the historic windows, so that, like I said, that'd be a historical assess, um, circle assessment, so. Yeah, you guys can give them that one.
Does that fire station have a first, professional chef?
Professional chef?
Yes, it says chef's office.
Chiefs. That's a Tara misspell, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Perhaps chief, my grandpa.
Do you have a personal chef?
We, we have guys that can cook.
No, I said joke, I'm gonna.
Cook like a mother, right?
The gas department, uh, snowboards on roof, new roof on Santa's workshop, safety shed. So the gas department has like four buildings, if you need Steve, just please ask him. He has like, I think he has three or four buildings, or I think.
Four.
Four, yeah, like four buildings, so he has the main, his main shop for his offices, people have equipment on the internal side there. We have Santa's workshop, which Steve, what's, what's in Santa's workshop?
That's just a storage shed we have, which is.
It's called Santa's workshop when you go out there though, so.
Yeah, we were building, when we acquired that about four years ago, we were building some Christmas decorations in that.
Oh, okay.
And the guys just started calling it Santa's workshop, so.
Okay.
The name started.
Safety shed on the gutters, getting electricity to the, the safety shed in Santa's workshop. New plexiglass in the chubby building, so that's another, I'm guessing the guy has named that one as well. New window screens on the main gas shop. Heat added to the chubby building, and then paving around the yard itself, so. A lot of small stuff, and see, this is what we were talking about, maybe pairing it together with other projects, that way we could get a, a good decent bid from, from a contractor, try to, try to make it work well for, for us, and then, the power plant.
All those windows.
There's windows, which I know every time you drive out there, they seem like they multiply, or at least now they have, ever since we put this together. And then, replace the mand, I think they're mand, they're mandors, right Dave?
Yes.
Mandors in the back of the building. Besides that, did the roof, that, that's, that's held up well, so. Yeah, that one's, that one's pretty, pretty using a power plant. Power and light, department, just some painting and some asphalt, so it must look pretty good out there, power line, actually it does look good out there. They keep well, they take care of it pretty good, and, yeah, and it's a newer building, so. Yeah, just paint asphalt, so like nothing said, I'll give one that we try to pair together, even with the painting contractor, if you say, hey, come in and paint X, Y, and Z for us, and give us a good quote on it, so, we're putting those RFPs together, we can do this type of stuff. The animal shelter, uh. So, a remodel, there's some interior stuff, painting touch up, replace damaging indoor canal door, and canine adoption room, so there's a door. Some cat shelf, cat shelves and hiding units, Heidi boxes, window purchase, so that's just kind of making that comfortable for the animals out there. The foster storage overhaul with wall mounted shelves and wall hooks, just to make it more functional. Privacy tape and fence, kind of separate it from the, from the other industrial uses around there. And then some break room improvements with the storage cabinet microwave, and then as well, that one has asphalt taping as well, so, and that part as well. The sewer. Big sidewalk in two locations, drainage around the plant ground, or drainage around the plant grounds. Security cameras and a security system, so working with IT on that, and then a remodel, new windows and screens for main office, new floor in the office. And then some, adding some fencing, and then HVAC unit in the de-watering building. There's another project out there as well for the headworks building, but I, we didn't put it on this list because it's a little more, a little more urgent than, than this, so. That's something I'm gonna try to budget for and, and at least piece together for a while, it, it is having its own separate project. Uh, the water shop, cut trench concrete to allow downspouts to drain underneath it, replace floor tile throughout, upgrade the air conditioning, and then adding some sensors to the garage, so like I said, the, this, even though it's kind of in order, but the garage sensors, if it's a cheap, easy, low hanging fruit, we'll do it, you know, hopefully, when we get some of these other garage things out, if it's, if it seems reasonable, but that's something that's definitely reasonable, so. That's the, that's the water shop. The water state building, this is on Great Creek Road. Remodel to include insulated and sheet partial interior walls and ceiling, replacing this lighting with LED lighting inside, patch a hole and paint the exterior. That was pretty, Mark, Mark for some reason got like five pages. Everyone else got stuck with one or two, and Mark, Mark, he talked, he sweet talked us into like, oh yeah, but this is this. But they're also minute, we're like, okay, Marco just kept, he just kept saying, okay, okay. The water pump stations, uh, one's on West Adams, one's on Robinson. Replace windows, replace spaces needed, paint the exterior of the building, generators, because those pump stations are very crucial to our water distribution system, so having some redundancy on the power's definitely a good deal. Install chimney cap, or cat, the chimney cap. The water treatment plants, this is up the north fork, up Highway twelve, so everybody knows where the water treatment plant is, it's way up there, the mountain's beautiful. So, roof repairs on the, around the penetrations. There's a concrete column that needs some repair in the sediment basin, and then some inter, internal remodel, new cabinets, countertops, in the lab, and then new sink, and repair of a ceiling from the leaking penetrations, so. Just like I said, there's small stuff, but we kind of had it up, we had all these buildings up, that's for sure. The house is up the river there, up the north fork, assault cap on chimney, install four new windows as well as in the basement. New carpet installed in the house, and then install some windows in the garage. Small stuff there, but it has a.
Hey Nick?
Yes?
Which one of those houses did the, we put it additional?
Good question.
Mark?
Is the one on the left?
Yeah.
That's our caretaker's house that takes care of the main water treatment plant.
The monumental water treating, treatment plant, new set of windows, and then replace the double doors as well, so. Like I said, Mark, Mark really talked us into it. Wastewater treatment plant, insulation of the building, so, to obviously keep things functioning.
Steve, next year we'll let you have four pages.
Yeah, I know, we should, now that I'm back here.
I'll separate yours out next time.
Uh, the community center, so I think the concrete retaining wall, I think that went out was as part of a separate project, included in different project that's out, or it's been awarded, so, that will actually be crossed off this list. Remodeling on the inside, which is the ceiling tiles from the, you know, leaking roof in the past. And then replacing the exercises rooms flooring, the kitchen needs a remodel, because it doesn't really function as a kitchen right now, so. To better use that, that facility, you know, when you, when you rent that space, a kitchen remodel would be, would need to take place. Gym wall mats, I think that's for the, for, under the baskets, and then I think the ones there, they're, they're starting to show their way a bit. And then like, yeah, ceiling tiles, and I think that's in the, or just throughout the building itself, the ceiling tiles. And then striping in the parking lot, this would be another one where we say, do we need to pave it, if we're putting out paving, so. Yeah, let's, we'll see, but that's, that's all we've done this year, so. Um, welcome center. Um, our interior remodel, pan, regular floor, pantry, restroom. I think there's some issue with the pressure of the toilets, so, uh, trying to get that resolved. Some smart thermostat, LED lights, adding some electrical plugins in the break room, adding some cabinets and then, uh, addition some furniture in the, in the break room, um, and then the repaving parking lot, the repaving the parking lot, creating a strike. So you can't see the qualifications for priority, we got safety, longevity facility, quality of life, effective operation and expansion. So that's kind of how we broke those up, you get your safety, making sure our facility's gonna stay around, making sure the people that are in there, their lives are comfortable, people that work there, um. The operations, making them more effective, and then expansion, where I was talking about adding buildings and stuff like that. Or unfortunately for, for, uh, the power plant, the windows, because that's, that's a very expensive endeavor there. Yeah, and then we laid out the, the priorities, the batement or remediation and then roofing, uh, concrete and masonry, which is kind of, and our, our thinking on this is, we want, one, we want it to be safe, so you have to do batement and stuff like that, obviously. And then you need a good solid roof, you need a good foundation, before you start going on the inside of these buildings. So that was kind of the thinking on the, on the priorities and how these projects would probably be looking to go out. Take care of the roof, take care of the foundation and your, and your structure, and then you could go inside and do stuff like IT for safety. Electrical, electrical remodels, um, garages, windows, HVAC, equipment, paving, and you have the big bills and then landscaping, because I don't think anyone put landscaping, but someone probably was, so. That was kind of the, how we put it together, like I said, my, my team, development services along with Tara and all these department heads. Uh, it's, it's a good thing to have for us long term, definitely, to keep track of our buildings, see what they've done, what we haven't done, um, what we need to iron for, so. I'll take questions, Tara did anything else?
I was just gonna say, in the past, it looks like maybe a hundred to two hundred thousand has been put in the budget specifically for renovation of municipal buildings. When you see the budget next month, we'll be asking for five hundred thousand from next year's CIP to start the implementation of these upgrades. And then we'll update the, the plan, as Nick said, his department will update that plan annually. You'll see projects come off, you'll see projects stay on, it'll be in the city council drive, we'll alert you when we update it. And, uh, I think the spirit behind it is that these are, as Nick stated, these are one of our most important assets. And, um, we want to make a commitment to the longevity of these buildings. So this is why the plan was put together, so we hope you'll consider that when you adopt the budget. And any questions? We've got department heads here.
No, I think I already asked my, so, because I, thank you so much for putting this all together.
No, no questions, good talk.
Not that there's a timeline in all these projects, all the building upgrades, the longevity, is there an estimation of?
Uh, I don't know, I guess, I mean, the timeline here is getting heated before you guys, before we start drafting the budget. But then after that, like I said, we'd be looking at remediation first and then looking at what projects we could group together for roofing. There was a couple of small ones, um, and then, I don't really know, it's gonna be a develop, it's gonna just be constant, how much, i- if it's five hundred thousand dollars, how much can we really get done in fact for five hundred thousand dollars? Space it out so our capacity can handle, I can't just put out five hundred thousand dollars worth of, uh, remodel work. It's not fair to my team because then, we, we could prepare it and do it in steps probably throughout the year, but we can't just be, it's February, we're gonna put these all down. And then my team's just scrambling, we don't do anything in the, for the other, you know, the rest of our, our, our jobs, so. Um, it's just be, be good planning and spacing them out and, uh, you know, spending five hundred thousand dollars in that, this year, see what we can really get out of it. Like I said, kind of focusing on roofs and then foundation and stuff, and then, uh, any low hanging fruit, so.
It could also come back in the middle of next year.
Yeah, oh definitely.
As Nick has said, and if we're getting projects done and we're getting them out and say, hey, if we can move two hundred or three hundred thousand more to that line item, here's what we could do, but we have to see what the pace looks like.
I, I really like the, having this global view of, of the punch list that applied to every building, and you all did a great job. There's one building I thought of that I'm sure there may be others, the Isaac Walton Lodge isn't on here, but I guess it's because it's not in active use and I wonder if there's any.
Yeah, I think, I think the thinking was, let's get the buildings that we have people in right now, let's get those, make sure they're, they're good. Because the Isaac Walton Building has a lot of value as well, but it's not, it's a, there's no operations out of it right now. And on top of that, I think we, since we purchased the building, we have put some towards it, so I don't, I don't think, I know there's one more project we have that is going out soon. Other than that, I don't think we'd have any more to add, after that, we'd be looking at kind of more, not longevity, I think longevity we're taking care of. It's gonna be the, making it more functional, so, but right now, there's, there's not a ton of operation in it, so.
I, I think I remember we were thinking of using it for storage or something.
Yeah, it's, it is a storage.
Okay.
So, uh, the only project we have less, left is a, we're gonna recoat, yeah, we're gonna recoat the, the metal, you know, outside because it needs a recoat, um, and then there's some stuff that we're on the backside that needs to be done as well. So we're gonna partner those, partner those together and put it out, I think, or, I think we've already, we've already done that, but we just need to have them go forward with it, so we find a better course or anything.
Okay, good job.
I have a procedural question and it's probably, I don't know if you can answer it, Nick, or maybe Tara. So in that punch list for these buildings, there's a lot of items that are contents. So are you gonna up the budget for those specific departments to buy that equipment?
No, well, uh, equipment like the generators, for example?
Well, like, there's just small items like-
They're part of that remodel, so they'll come out of capital.
Oh, even stuff like that?
Part of the capital, if it's part of that remodel project, sure.
Alright.
That's, that's all I need, thank you Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
Appreciate it. Second item on the work session is twenty twenty four international code. That's you too?
Yes.
Are they paying you extra? Thank you, gentlemen.
It's because I missed, I don't know if you know, because I missed council like two weeks in a row, two or two times in a row like earlier. This is what, this is what I've been doing.
This is punishment.
This is what I've been doing.
We'll try and make it as light as possible.
So yeah, so the, the development services team is looking at adopting the twenty twenty four international building code, um, international residential code, all the other codes associated with it. And this is kind of being driven by, um, it's a house bill, um, signed by, I don't know how the house bill's coming in, I just get, you know, to me and other couple, so.
Shawna said she'll answer for you.
Yeah, I have Shawna, she, she's helped us with it, um, quite a bit, she, she could elaborate anything I missed, because she, she's definitely professional in this one. But a lot of this house bill is surrounded around the, the energy code. So, and that's gonna be the major change from the twenty eighteen, which we currently add to the twenty twenty four, is the energy code. And, let's see, in the house bill, it says, let's see, before July one, twenty twenty six, municipalities and counties that updated building code shall adopt and enforce energy code that achieves an equi- equivalent or better energy performance than the twenty twenty one international energy code, conservation code. And model electric and solar ready code developed by the board. On or after July twenty, so if you missed that deadline there, July one, twenty twenty six, uh, same thing. Municipalities and counties that updated building code shall adopt and enforce an energy code that achieves equivalent or better energy performances than the model low energy and carbon code language developed by the board. So what this really means is, if you adopt before July one, twenty twenty six, um, a building code, you can revert back to the twenty twenty one international energy code. So that's actually not as stringent as the twenty twenty four, it's not as stringent as when you'd have to adopt after. So we're kind of doing this to help, even though it's gonna be a change. We're trying to do this so we could at least adopt the twenty twenty one instead of something that's even more difficult to follow. With that. Oh, I'll also say that we, we're gonna held, this is just the work session, we're gonna hold a public meeting, we put it out, so can we talk to contractors that come in? Actually, tonight at six, so we'll have a public meeting after this, here's some of the feedback, direct feedback from the contractors of this, who are gonna be, um, affected. But overall, the codes, I, I, I mean, they're, they're not too different, there's some, I mean, obviously they changed codes, so they, there are differences. The wind and, uh, snow load, they, they had modifications, so that's gonna play a big role for some of our, a lot of contractors to be the, like the homeowners, because they buy a carport and they say, what's the wind and solar load? So that, that's gonna play into it a little bit, and, and the hard part is it changes based on the construction material. So it's kind of, it can't just be a real solid answer like it was in the past, but we'll work out with them, we'll get sheets, spread sheets, or sheets put together, that way you can say, what are you making it out of? Okay, here's, here it is, so, um, it, and it did go up just slightly, both wind and snow. Besides that, yeah, I have Shawna here, she's, she adopts this, she helps municipalities adopt building codes. So I don't know, she fell on her lap and I'm so, she called, we were talking about this and then she called Tara and she's like, are you guys thinking about this? I'm like, yeah, we'll take all the help we can get, because, um, she's definitely professional in it and, uh, she can help answer any questions. Yeah, like I said, this will go, we're, we're gonna do a public meeting tonight, um, depending on how that goes, we might hold another one. We'll probably, won't be coming back for an ordinance, probably for maybe a month, the second, maybe, at best the second meeting in October. Um, I gotta, I'm going to hold a meeting with kind of commission as well, so try to keep everyone informed out there, um. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's all I have, it's, uh, it's a change, so, it's gonna, it's, it's a big one, it affects people.
What about the fees are, are those, and?
No, we're, we're gonna-
Fees went up or are they staying the same?
They're gonna stay the same, they're gonna stay the same.
Oh, what you got, Mr. Gary? Who sets the, the fees, us or Steve?
The, the, the international code has recommendations, but I think we adopt our own, um, but those are the ones, we didn't change them, right there?
No, they, they, they stayed the same, we did a re, um, checked around locally to see what everybody else is around us, we're about the same.
Yeah, so we just, we stayed the same there, you have to, that's a, you have to do an amendment saying, we're not gonna accept the international code, we're gonna accept ours instead. So we put in our own fee schedule.
Questions for Mr. Mason?
Nick, I, I read that, and the international building codes, what, who's exempt is the, uh, townhouses up to two or three stories and some of the two family detached houses, I read that they may be exempt from these international codes? That are upgraded? No?
No, I'm sorry, um, I, I mean, there might be some exemptions for something, but not from the codes themselves.
IBC, I think I read.
Yeah, no, I mean, the, they might be exempt from the IBC, but that's because they're, they're handled under the IRC, which is the residential code. You can build a townhouse and a two families dwelling under the residential code, um, but, I mean, under the building code. But it's much easier to do under the residential code, so you will, um, so nobody will build it under the, the building code.
Can you please give us your full name?
You bet you.
I know you as Shawna.
Shawna Mozinho, uh, with Mozinho Code Group, yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
I'm just wondering, I'm looking at the ordinance as, you know, this draft, that would it be a good idea to include somewhere in a warehouse closet? The reasoning for doing this is because of the house bill, and that the house bill requires cities to do this, or whatever it is, just for historical reference.
Absolutely, but no further justification, the reason, absolutely.
That was a good question.
It's the only thing I've heard, so, that has to remain.
House Bill twenty-three thirteen sixty-two.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
So, lending out, I, I need some clarification. So if we change the building code prior to next July, we don't have to go through, it simplifies our process here?
It's, if, what the house bill says is, if you change codes now, anytime between now and July first, June thirtieth, uh, of twenty twenty six, and you only, you adopt, you have your choice between the twenty-one and the twenty-four energy code. Um, and you can amend the twenty-four to be less restrictive, which is what we have said, what we have proposed here. Adopt the twenty-four because it's cheaper to build to than the twenty-one, but to amend some of the things down to the twenty-one, so that's what we're looking at doing. But you also have to adopt the electric ready, solar ready, EV ready code with it, that's a state mandate we have no control over. Um, but if you wait until after July first of next year, then you have to adopt the low energy and carbon code instead of just electric ready. Which the low energy and carbon code goes into a, a bit more, it's more energy requirements based on the size of your house, and then it also has that gas, electric, you know, where they want, prefer you to go all electric, so you could do less if you go all electric, you can do more if you use gas. Those are the kinds of things that are in the future code, the after July first, so if you adopt now, you don't have those.
See, and I just thought, I assumed it's just the opposite, and twenty-one is more lenient than twenty-
Yeah, I think a lot of people think that, that the more you go through the codes, that, the more strict it is. But the National Association of Home Builders was really involved in writing this twenty-four, and so they have got so much flexibility in there. Uh, but it actually brought the cost of destruction down quite a bit from the, from the twenty-one, so.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you so much, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That ends the work session portion of our meeting. Let's see, it is three forty-seven, we'll take five minutes to clear the room, when we will hold on a special video.